I'm not used to this. Is that my?
Was this my move? Is this like my permanent move?
I think she shifted today.
I think he just shifted, yes. He just shifted. You're not shifty.
You're shifty.
Well, I don't think he's a no-no-no-no.
I'd like to bring this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Is there a motion to certify closed session?
Madam Chair, I certified it at the best of each member's knowledge. The Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convene the closed meeting or heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing nun, Ms. Serza.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Ongbe.
Aye.
We're moving on to item 3.1, a public hearing for the FY21 operating budget, and I believe we have two. I'm going to toss it to Mr. Kelly, sure, first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board, those citizens desiring to speak should have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. It is the Board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected, hence citizens are asked to not engage in applauding verbal outbursts or any other type of demonstrations during the presentation. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings, therefore, the Board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the Board does not respond to your comments during the meeting, your comments are being heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated three minutes to make their presentation, and the Board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair. My instructions are concluded.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Hummel. Mr. Williams.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Charlie C. Williams. "It is easier to build strong children than it is to repair broken men," quotation by Frederick Douglass. "It is better to prepare and prevent than to repair and repent. It is also cheaper as it relates to capital expenditures." That's my quotation. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak before the esteemed Board. I come to you as an advocate and not in an adversarial position. As I stated, my name is Charlie Williams. I'm a retired business executive from a major Fortune 500 corporation. My mission and will is to pay it forward by mentoring to the least of these. I have an in-depth understanding of the budgeting and funding process. The budgeting and funding process reveals the priorities of an entity. For forty-plus years, numbers was a metric for my performance. Budgeting and funding of mental health counselors for early childhood education is mission-critical to build strong children. Mental health resources are drastically needed in the organizational structure of the WJCC Bright Beginnings Program. For the past four years, I have volunteered at Bright Beginnings at JBB Elementary. In fact, last year, I was awarded Outstanding Volunteer of the Year. I have seen firsthand the trauma that many at-risk children display in behavior, i.e. aggressive behavior toward teachers as well as other children. I have also experienced the deliverance and transformation successes because of a principal and teachers who are passionately committed. Most of this is beyond their pay grade. They do it because they simply are dedicated. They need your funding support. The numbers. In business, they say, if you don't know your numbers, you don't know your business. So I asked a lot of questions. Approximately 350 students are in the Bright Beginnings Program. Approximately 138 or 39% are general education but at risk. Approximately 212 or 61% of the students have special education needs. There are many at-risk three- and four-year-olds who are on the waiting list due to lack of space. Students going to kindergarten have significant behaviors that are linked to mental health issues. When not addressed, it manifests. Spend your money and your resources on the front end so as not to have an increase in your budget on the back end. No matter what, you're going to pay. You either pay now, early, at a reduced cost, or pay later, at a premium cost. As an advocate for the Bright Beginning Children's, I leave you with the following and look forward to convening further discussions on the most urgent issues. Matthew 25th Chapter, 40th verse. "And the King will answer them. Today truly I say to you, as you did to one of these, the least of these, my brothers, you did it to me. I yield back the balance of my time if I didn't eat it up."
Thank you so much.
Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Bowser.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Heron, School Board, and our WJCC leaders. I'm coming to you because I had some teachers approach me, and this is in regards to your discussion with the budget. On an issue I don't know has been brought up, and that is our substitute teachers. I don't know the last time that they have had a pay increase, or the other divisions, and not just our teachers, but our bus drivers, or cafeteria workers, or custodial workers that also substitute. They do a tremendous job. I could not take off unless I have a substitute in that classroom. They are walking in, sometimes expecting to work one area, and then they do another. They walk in, and I have been there before as a substitute with no lesson plans, you have to come up with something very quickly. But it's happening in some of our areas. Myself being a teacher, our administrators are substituting. That means we're being taken away from our planning time. Our teacher assistants are being taken away from their students as well. So I had some to come saying it's getting more and more and more of us doing that because we don't have the substitutes coming in. So some ideas that were brought. If we are going to be substituting, is there any way to be compensated for that? Whether it's financial, whether it's comp time. Also, making certain that we create, it was mentioned before, an environment that is welcoming to our substitute teachers, because there's nothing worse to come back and see, "I will not substitute for your class again." So when the substitutes know that if they come in, that disrespect or defiance that they were experiencing will be addressed. Also, it has been mentioned to you again about not just them, but our bus drivers also that come and substitute. So I'm asking, as you're doing your discussion, when was the last time that they did have a pay increase? What about our other divisions? Where do they stand? Because we want to keep our substitute teachers and make sure they attract good substitute teachers. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowser. The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have a student from Matoka who's going to lead us in the pledge, Ms. Catherine Franzone, who is in fourth grade.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Ms. Serza, would you call the roll, please?
For the record, Dr. Beers is absent tonight due to illness. Ms. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Dowell?
Here.
Ms. Hummel?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mrs. Young?
Here.
Ms. Ongbe?
Here.
Moving on to item 4.3, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing nun, Ms. Serza.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Ongbe?
Aye. Item 5.1, Announcements and Superintendent's Report. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My report this evening includes student accolades, a slam dunk partnership, and a celebration of school leaders. First tonight, please join me in congratulating two Warhile High School students for winning first place in a mobile app challenge sponsored by Congresswoman Elaine Luria. Seniors Zachary Reckmeyer and Julian Curtis Zilius created an app that rewards students for good behavior in the classroom. Zachary and Julian will be recognized by Congresswoman Luria at an event in Virginia Beach later this week. They are also invited to attend a hashtag House of Code event at the U.S. Capitol Building in the spring, where students from across the country will present the incredible apps that won their district's congressional app challenge. So congratulations to them. Here's a story that's sure to be music to your ears. This Thursday is the WJCC Masterworks Concert. The event features a collaborative performance by students from each of the high schools' orchestras and choirs. Musicians from the Virginia Symphony Orchestra funded by the Virginia Symphony Society in Williamsburg, and musicians from the Williamsburg Symphony have worked with students in sectionals to help them prepare. The WJCC Masterworks Concert begins at 7:00 PM Thursday, January 23 at Lafayette High School, and I certainly don't plan to miss that one. Sounds wonderful. I'd also like to thank the Williamsburg Symphony for their recent visits to our elementary schools. The musicians captivated students with incredible performances of Peter and the Wolf. We are fortunate that members of our community are so actively engaged in our schools. I had the opportunity to go to JB Bladen to see the last performance, and the students were just enraptured by the whole thing. It was really amazing. Speaking of community involvement, members of the William &amp; Mary Men's Basketball Team recently spent some time at Matthew Bailey Elementary School, reading and exercising with students. They even took a few minutes to sign autographs. Let's take a look. What a wonderful partnership. Finally, this evening, I want to remind our community that this is Principal Appreciation Week. As you know, our principals are so important to our schools. They are the instructional leaders, they love and care for our students, and they support and help our incredible staff members develop professionally. Every day this week, we will be visiting schools to celebrate our principals and thank them for their dedication and tireless efforts to support their students and staff. And just so happens tonight, I believe, we have two principals in the audience. Mr. Jacobs, and I, yes, quick clap for Mr. Jacobs. And then a double clap for Principal Swan, who now is Dr. Swan as of today. All week long, in fact, for the rest of the month, we will be featuring our principals on the school division's Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram accounts. We've got interesting trivia about each principal, their work, and their hobbies. For example, can you guess which principal's first concert was to see the rock band Kiss? And which principal joined the military before becoming a principal? I can see you're all intrigued at this moment. Visit our social media accounts this week to find out all about our wonderful principals. Madam Chair, that concludes our announcements for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. I know Ms. Cook has a report to give.
I was thinking about Kiss. Sorry. Who is it? Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I actually wanted to talk about the last CAC meeting. Mr. Dowell came with me. Thank you very much. And the next one, Mrs. Young is going to be joining me. And feel free to add anything if I've left anything out, but this WJCC staff gave an update on the budget presentation that had been given at our last work session, particularly as it related to the eight recommended FTEs for special education. And then they had a discussion about following up on their report and the recommendations embedded in the report that they give to us each year. Specifically, they spent some time talking about inclusion, and WJCC staff shared some research that they had done on that topic, sort of benchmarking and looking at other divisions for models. And that, there's a subcommittee of the CAC that's focused on inclusion, and they'll be working with WJCC staff and bringing that back to those recommendations or conversations back to the next meeting. And additionally, I'd like to, Dr. Heron mentioned this at our earlier work session, but I would just like to thank Supervisors McGlinan and Eisenhower for joining us, the School Board in Richmond, last week, where we had the opportunity to not only hear updates about the state budget and legislation going through the General Assembly, but we also met with delegates Batten and Mullen, and Senators Mason and Norma, and they were really generous with their time. And we sat down with them in their offices and shared with them specifically our interests around funding.
Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Yes, I have a report from the CTE Committee of, we met last week, and several things came up. February is CTE Month, National CTE Month, Career Technical Education. On February 4, the middle school course planning will be set up, and that's an opportunity for students to find out more about courses and to plan for the forthcoming year. High school course planning will be on February 6. And on February 21, which is, I think, is really wonderful, that 13 students from each of our high schools can participate in an Engineering Career Day, which will be held at the New Horizons School Gem. This event's being sponsored by the Peninsula Engineering Council, Newport News Shipyard, NASA, and the Jefferson Lab. And this will give students an opportunity to find out more about that field of work. It's a busy committee, and we will keep working.
Thank you, Ms. Young. There's no additional reports or comments. We will move on to the school spotlight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, the spotlight shines on the Penguins of Laurel Lane Elementary School, and the many ways they are using technology to foster personal growth, academic success, and a love of reading. I would like to welcome Principal Dr. Karen Swan back to the podium to introduce the spotlight this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Heron. It's always a privilege to be given the opportunity to speak about Laurel Lane Elementary School, home of the Penguins, and the wonderful things happening there. The learning experiences you will be reviewing tonight feature some of the ways we are infusing technology into our school community. Recognizing the importance of technology, and how important it is, and what it plays into our daily lives, this video spotlights just three ways our students, staff, and our families are making use of technology in a meaningful way. You'll be introduced to our school's Penguin News Network, which is affectionately called PNN, and that is a student-led daily news broadcast, the use of the interactive app called Classroom Dojo, and that's allowing us to integrate technology, which allows us to also include our families in it. And you will see Storytime Live. That is our weekly bedtime reading that is streamed on our school's Facebook page, and it will be on tonight at 8:00 PM with our Assistant Principal, Mrs. Nelson, sharing. Ultimately, there is a desire to facilitate ways our families can see what their children are learning, and we want to make use of those interactions, ensure that they're effective and efficient. Further, though, technology is an amazing tool, and we are finding ways to make instructional practices and learning experiences better for teachers and students. So I am excited to have you to see our video.
PNN is a news network for our school. It stands for Penguin News Network, and it's something that's really fun for kids to do and watch. PNN is fun because of all the little extra things that we get to do, like Dance Party Friday, Movement Monday. It's just fun, like, working as a group of people, the students, and we get to do something as kids and not just the adults that are doing it. Honestly, it's like a privilege to work with PNN, and I think it's very fun.
Well, it helps me because I have something to look forward to. The students are probably like, "Ooh, I wonder what PNN is going to be like today. I wonder who's going to be on it, and if it's going to be hot, if it's going to be cold, if it's going to be rainy." So then they know for recess, or when they go outside, and what the rules are in the cafeteria, so they know what the people are going to be looking for.
Seeing them in the roles of anchors for the PNN, and how responsible they were, and how they worked as a team, and I really saw some qualities in kids I had no idea. They have this star quality about them, and they really take it seriously, and it's really important to them. And I think some kids didn't even know that that was their thing until they got on camera and started sharing with their classmates the news, or the weather, or their birthdays, and they just really blossomed in that role.
I mean, I love anything that allows the kids to have opportunities to not only be in a leadership kind of role, but to problem solve. They run into issues sometimes, and they have to figure out ways to work around it. They have to help organize how they do the things, or who's doing the order, making sure everything important is covered. We get to talk to the entire school through there, so I love that that is a great avenue for them to see us, and we can review some expectations, but also really celebrate the great things that are happening.
I use Class Dojo, which I have used for several years, but just recently I started using the Class Dojo portfolio part of it, and it's a great way for parent communication. Students and their organizations take a picture of a word sort that they're doing, or they can take a video of a book that they're reading, and parents see it instantly, which is awesome. And it also takes some paperwork off of me, because I don't have to check the paper. I just get an alert and look at it, and I have to approve it, so they can't just take pictures of, you know, random things, and then, so I approve it, and then the parents instantly get an alert and see it, and they can like it or comment on it, or they are very interested in taking pictures. They like that the parents can see it, they know that they see it instantly, and for the ones who are doing it more consistently than others, I can tell that the parents are saying something at home about it, because they're excited to do it, and the parents are looking at it and commenting on it, so I can tell that there's some communication there.
If they're working independently or in a small group, the teacher might not necessarily see, but it's a great way for them to show it, so they can take a picture on the iPad or the tablet. And what's great is the teacher, at the end of the day, can easily scroll through, "Oh, look, this kid totally understood this. Oh, look, this one knows even more. I can push him higher." Or seeing, "Oh, this one struggled with this, and hey, I might need to practice, or we might need to review that." But a great way to kind of see what kids are doing when they're off in their small group. And I feel like the kids get so excited about being able to share things they've done, what they've completed. I've seen some of our kindergartners reading their books that they practice, so they flip the pages and they read, and just the joy and the excitement that they get, I'm like, isn't that what we're kind of aiming for? We're trying to get them excited about learning, so it's really cool to get to see that happen. And I feel like CSUN Class Dojo allow a platform to make that happen. The way I would describe Storytime Live would be getting to choose books. I love that we get to kind of pick some diverse topics, some diverse titles, getting kids to be able to see themselves in the books, because they don't always get to do that. So I love that we get to be strategic about the books we pick, and then we get to read it on Facebook Live at a standard time weekly. I love that it's something that the kids can sort of look forward to, and it's kind of become a pattern, so I enjoy that. But basically, that's what we do. I've had a couple people ask me about it, and like, how did it start? So it's kind of exciting, and I love that if a kid goes home and isn't able to hear a story, because, you know, mom and dad are big here, I think there's this opportunity to tune in to somebody here at school, and then we kind of have this whole collection of stories that they can go back to and listen to.
I really don't think that we can stress to kids how important reading is without modeling it for them. And we model it for them at school, but I think it's also important for them to see at home that we are readers too. And so, when we record during the summer, they're saying that we're reading, we read during the summer. When we record from vacation, they say, "Hey, when we're on vacation, we read there too." So I think that part of it, that we're just modeling how important reading is, and that we're readers too, that we're all readers together, I think that's just the most important part of it.
I have a granddaughter who just turned four. The first time that my granddaughter Gracie saw it, you were the one reading the story. And previously, she had met you at Open House, and she was so excited because she recognized who was reading the story. So from then on, they have tuned in. If they can't do it on Tuesday, they do it on another night, but they tuned into the story, and Gracie loves, every single story that has been read to her, she loves. She loves books, anyway. But it was another way of her being exposed to someone else reading the stories and to a positive reinforcer about school when she's ready to go to school. And it's just been a delightful experience all the way around.
I like those books, because it teaches me.
I saw the excitement you all had with the Dallas Cowboys Stadium, Mrs. Nelson. We are both huge fans, but it's just, they make me smile. It's a privilege to be able to serve at Laurel Lane, and I'm grateful for the staff, the innovation, the willingness to take opportunities to be able to engage our students and our families. So, thank you for this time.
Thank you very much. Before you leave, I believe Mr. Walker has a presentation for you.
Congratulations again, Karen. We appreciate you, and I know this has been a journey to get to that. Dr. Swan.
Thank you.
It's going to make me cry. One of my teachers texted, she's like, "How are you going to celebrate?" I was like, "I just want to go to sleep." So, looking forward to some good sleep, but I'm going to make sure I catch Storytime Live this evening at 8:00, so.
Well, before you run away, are there any comments?
I just want to say, Dr. Swan, let's, but I think this is, the Storytime thing is really great, and I was, I think I was on Twitter or something and saw a link to it, and I was really excited about that. It was, I think it's a, I think it's a great, it's a great, you know, easy, really kind of initiative, and it really reaches the kids in their homes. So I think it's a very engaging thing, so thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say, I do hope you get some sleep.
Thank you.
And I just hope you calm down eventually.
Thank you.
Never a dull moment.
Any additional comments?
Thank you.
Dr. Swan, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Swan.
This is my village, and there's been a huge amount of support. Almost 20 years of my life have been here with WJCC. So I'm truly grateful. So thank you, guys.
We're grateful for you. So the next item is 7.1 Citizens Comments. However, I don't believe we have any. So we will just move straight on to the Consent Agenda. So Item 8.1, approved minutes from the January 7th meeting. Item 8.2, approved financial report, monthly bills and payroll for November 2019. Item 8.3, financial report and monthly bills and payroll for December 2019. Item 8.4, personnel actions. Item 8.5, Resolution R-2-20 African American History Month. Item 8.6, Resolution R-3-20 CTE Education Month. Item 8.7, Resolution R-4-20 National School Counseling Week. Item 8.8, revised policy GBE Staff Health and Safety. Item 8.9, revised policy GBEG Workers Compensation Staff Protection. Item 8.10, retired policy GCBB Strategic Benefits Plan Policy. And lastly, Item 8.1111, revised policy GCBC Staff Benefits. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I move we approve the Consent Agenda as recited by our esteemed Chair.
A second. Any discussion?
Just don't read it again.
Hearing no discussion, Ms. Sersa.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. Item 9.1, is there a motion to adopt the VSBA Code of Conduct for school board members, which we all signed except for Dr. Beers, who's not here?
Madam Chair, I move adoption of the VSBA Code of Conduct for school board members.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sersa.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Item 9.2, adopt the Program of Studies for 2020 and 2021. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the Program of Studies for 2020 through 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to point out that it is unusual for school boards to take action on the Program of Studies. Typically, the administration has jurisdiction over that and then reports back to the school board on any changes that they make.
Any additional comments?
I would just like to share that I have a personal invested interest in the POS because I work for a company which my husband owns, Lantec Resources, and we currently serve as an internship site for WJCC students. However, I believe that I'm able to participate in the consideration and vote for the Program of Studies fairly and in the public interest.
Unless there's further question? Sersa?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Item 9.3, award a contract for request for proposal number 20-14379 Engineering Services for Berkeley Middle School HVAC Replacement and Roof Repairs.
Madam Chair, I move that we award a contract for request for proposal 20-14379 Engineering Services for Berkeley Middle School HVAC Replacement and Roof Repairs to Mosley Architects for $411,261.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sersa.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Item 9.4, award purchase request of books for small group instruction.
Madam Chair, I move that we award the purchase request of books for small group instruction to Heinemann in the amount of $161,825.45.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sersa.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. Item 9.5, award the Division Security Camera Upgrade Project.
Madam Chair, I move that we award the Division Security Camera Upgrade Project to Office Pro Technologies in the amount of $383,000.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sersa.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
And Item 9.6, award purchase request for classroom wireless projection.
Madam Chair, I move that we award purchase request for classroom wireless projection to Optech in the amount of $483,430.
Second. Any discussion? And Ms. Sersa?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. Moving on to Item 10.1, Board Member Comments and Requests. I'll start with Mr. Dowell.
Well, I did not have anything to offer today. I'll leave it at that. I'm getting over the flu and a little in the fog right now. Excuse me. Wash your hands, everybody.
Thank you for sharing that.
But not the flu.
Public service announcement.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to just thank the NAACP for their annual Act So event. It is remarkable, and I'm always in awe when I see the students and their accomplishments. And it makes me feel hopeful about the future when I see how wonderful they are. And so I appreciate the NAACP's commitment to that event and that process because that's not so in every community. So we're lucky to have that. And then I also wanted to thank the people who came out to speak today on the budget. It's always important to hear from citizens, and so I appreciate that. Specifically, I am curious about the substitute teacher issue, and I wonder if staff can at some point provide information to the board on that as part of the budget discussion.
Sure. Thank you. Mrs. Young?
Yes, I want to thank all of the preparation from our staff today. They were busy, I can tell. I appreciate the updates and helps us make a more informed decision and, which is critical, especially at this juncture. Also want to thank Twano Middle School for the opportunity that Ms. Cook and I had the opportunity of visiting. It was, I always find it interesting because it seems to me when sixth graders go to middle school, they're so little, and by the end of eighth grade, they look like giants. And, but we had the opportunity to see how classes change. We had an opportunity to go to a science classroom. She was growing some plant. I don't remember what that was, but it was interesting. And they were using the, is that iXL? Is that what we talked about today during our budget? And we had a great opportunity to see that in action. And I think in all of the classrooms that we visited, they were all, in some form or the other, using iXL, and which I think gave us a good snapshot of what that was like. So I enjoyed my visit, and I want to thank Twano Middle School.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. I don't really have much to add. I'm sure it was a pine tree that we were growing in the Twano Middle School classroom. And I'd like to reiterate what Mrs. Cook said earlier about going to Richmond with our funding partners, with some representative of our funding partners. And the Capitol Conference in general, particularly this year, when Richmond is a whole new game as it has been in previous, and just being able to get the sense of what's out there, what's going to happen, what's not going to happen from the Capitol Conference, I thought was really very educational for me personally and I think for the rest of the board, so that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Hummel?
Same thing. We are sporting these scarves from the Capitol Conference, and I also got a lot out of it personally. It's always great to go and hear the governor speak and hear the, all the new legislation that is up for discussion, and then loved getting the opportunity to go with our funding partners to speak individually with all of our representatives. So I thought that was great. Also loved the NAACP Act So Awards. That's always an awe-inspiring event. I also would like to request of the administration, if they could give us information on substitute pay, the kind of historically, what's the last time for the teachers that they've received, any kind of an increase. I was a substitute back in 2003 when I moved here, and it was $70 a day. I don't know what it is now, but back then it was $70 a day. And it was, it was a lot of work for that $70. So I would also be interested in seeing what our surrounding areas. So if you could give us kind of a history of that and then just go down that list like all the other lists, and just, if you don't mind, I think it would be a very beneficial thing to hear. And then also thank Mr., is it Williams? That came out to talk so eloquently about the need for extra support for bright beginnings. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. I just have to say ditto to all the wonderful things my colleagues have said. Act So, certainly, I always feel like I was an underachiever compared to the students that are in our division and neighboring divisions as well. And then to speak to our community members, thank you because we are only as good as our community supports us and advocates for us. So thank you for coming tonight. I am glad we had an opportunity to attend the VSBA Capitol Conference and did enjoy listening to the governor, and there was a certain level of excitement and potential for funding and recognizing the need for school funding. Enjoyed listening to some of the political insights and in-depth kind of review of the budget and implications of the budget. And then wanted to note again, we did have an opportunity to have two supervisors attend our advocacy appointments with our legislators. I will be going with the Board of Supervisors on the 2nd. I've also been extended an invitation by Ruth Larson. The two of us are going to do a presentation on school board and board supervisors, relationships and working together to the VACO Conference, which is the Virginia--
Association of Counties.
Right. So I will do that on February 2nd, and we'll have an opportunity to travel with them and speak with the same legislators. So I'm very grateful that we have this partnership, and it's evidenced by the work that we do together, so. Moving on to upcoming--
Storytime at 8:00.
Going past now. So we have a student advisory committee is January 22nd at 3:00 in the Media Center at War Hill. The NSBA Equity Symposium, several board members will be attending that in Washington DC on the 1st of February. And then followed by the Advocacy Institute, the 2nd through the 4th, also in Washington DC. The Special Education Advisory Committee is meeting on the 13th of February, the James City County Rec Center, 6:30 in the evening. The Policy Committee is meeting on the 20th of February in Room 309 at 8:00. And then upcoming meetings, we have closed session on February 4th at 5:00 PM here in the Annex. And then followed by another closed session at 6:00 PM in the same room. We'll have a work session here in this room at 6:30. We'll have a meeting on February 18th where we'll discuss the superintendent's proposed budget. That will be at Mounts Bay, and then followed by our regular meeting at 6:30.
Additional comments, feedback?
Storytime at 8:00.
Okay, let's go. This meeting is adjourned.